We ready?
Yep.
Have pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have Councilman Nordean has called in and he's not available. Uh, but everybody else is present. Uh, that's a record show that we do have a quorum. Uh, those that would like to join me in prayer, please do. Lord, architect of everything we do, please give us guidance as we do the best we can for the town Shoshone and please bless all of our citizens. In this, I ask in your name, Lord, amen. And approval of the agenda?
I need to amend the agenda.
Yes.
I need to add, um, seventy-seven, uh, construction needs to, we have a change order for a new business. Seventy-one? Yeah.
Seventy-one construction?
Yeah, that's, sorry.
Under new business?
I guess that's what we'd put it under, right?
Yeah, it's as good as any. I, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other additions?
Move, we approve the agenda with, uh, as amended.
Second. Been moved, we approve the agenda amended by Councilman Stettler. Seconded by Councilman Whitener. Any further discussion? None being on paper, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Well, the polls the same. Motion passed, all in the affirmative. Any communication from citizens? Do we have anybody online? Consent agenda can have approval of the minutes, September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Sec, approve, motion to approve the minutes, uh, by Councilman Whitener, second by Councilman Stettler. Any further discussion? None being on paper, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Polls the same. Motion passed, all in the affirmative. Approval of the bill, September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five to October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
Move clear. Proof that the bill is as stated.
Been moved by Councilman Stettler, we approve the bill, September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five through October. Now have a second.
A second?
Second by Councilman Hardkey. Discussion.
I have this voucher for you. I, I'm not quite understanding what it is. Oh, we're not there? Oh, sorry. I'm ahead of us.
We're on, we're on above that.
So is our ambulance ready now?
Um. Yeah, they're just, they should pick up tomorrow.
Any further discussion on the bills?
Do we, on the drug testing deal, I guess, is that our, do we do that?
We, we, we can if we, if, uh, we, bill is warranted.
Okay, I just don't recall seeing that in previous bills.
Yeah, we did, we did, we did a, a drug test.
Okay. Yep. It just, it was, uh, different than what I was.
Yeah, yeah, we haven't, we haven't done one for for a long, long time. I don't know when the last one was done. But we, we did do a drug test, okay.
On the, um.
Can I ask you, is that in your, um, when you get hired here, is it in your book?
Yes.
That you can drug test?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do a random or with problem cause.
Cause I know you have to, if it's not there, you have to give it thirty-day notice.
Yeah, we can't.
Right.
Right.
If we have cause, we can have one or we can be randomized.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I've read the employee hand manual. Pretty heavy. Um, the question I have is on the wellhouse request. Uh, and you, you may have answered this, but I might just need a little refreshing here. You did say the concrete for five was fixed.
Correct.
Not in, I didn't bring my notepad, so sorry.
You said they'd report, they'd report it.
Right. Um, and then four's been completed as well?
Let Mike add to that. The concrete?
Right.
Yeah, it's been poured, it looks good too.
On four?
Yeah, well, four seven five.
Yeah.
Five has been replaced.
I know when Joel and I went and looked at it, we had some concerns with that situation.
Yes.
It's all, all of it.
So where, where I'm coming in at is why I bring this to fruition is on four, did we receive the credit that we were supposed to receive on that?
I, I think if they finished it and did it correctly, we, you know, it was per contract. So the credit, if, if we, if we accepted it as is, we would have received a credit. But they went and we had them tear it out and repair it to the way it should have been to start off with.
Then we didn't get it.
So we did not get a credit. They offered a credit in lieu of fixing it.
Right, and I, I recall that, but it, was it a total tear out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? It's good questions.
Answers my question.
Yep, they, yeah, we, they, like I said, that was a good call out in the field. I appreciate you going out with me, councilman, out there and looking at that and your expertise in concrete.
Yeah, absolutely. Appreciate you having to come out.
But it was, but that was the right call. Yes. Thank you. Any, any other questions? Call a question. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same, I said aye, mayor said aye. Polls the same. All motion approved, all in the affirmative. Travel voucher, oh nine, twenty-five, twenty-five. Travel voucher, ten, oh seven, twenty-five. Travel voucher, ten, eight, nine, twenty-five. Travel voucher, oh nine, twenty-five. Highsmith, travel voucher, oh nine, twenty-five, twenty-five, J merit.
I have a question about the J merit. Because I called Wind River Visitor Center and they say they pay for, he just has to apply through them for, to pay back his, um, travel expense. It's not something that we have to pay.
Okay, we can do that in the future, but I would suggest we go ahead and pay this one, because that's, you know, what, what we're set up.
So Wind River Visitors Council has a fund for that?
Yeah.
Yep, that's the first I ever heard of it, but they never told me.
Well, I would, I mean, I feel like I'm, I'm grateful that Jay's willing to do this for the town and I'm, I think it would be proper to reimburse mileage on them, but I think we should pursue the, uh,
Agree, from now on.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, from now on.
And, and look into that before there's another expense.
Yeah, that's exactly what I, I feel. God damn you, I didn't know that. Did you find that out?
Read.
Read what?
Actually called him.
Oh, Helen or something? Oh, okay.
Make a motion to approve the following listed travel vouchers.
Been moved by, that's the first move?
Second.
Okay.
By the following, you meant all the listed?
Correct. Okay, moved by Councilman Whitener, second by Councilman Stettler to approve all of the trouble vouchers as presented. Any further discussion? None being on paper, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. I'll abstain from that because most of them are mine. I, I don't know. Do I got, I did, we already asked those question, could should I be abstaining from those? Because that's most of them mine?
Yeah, you, you need to abstain from the, uh, the thing that has to do with.
Yeah. So notes of mayor abstained from the vote. And it passed all in the affirmative. We moved down now to department head report, public works.
Good evening, Mayor Hesch, Mr. Johnson. Brief update of the wellhouse, we have project.
Yeah, all that, uh, that well number five, all that cement has been that was rejected, has been ripped out and replaced. It, it looks very good now. It's a lot better than the first one, that first one. First one was there. The sidewalk that well pours is just same as the well five. It's been poured. The well number four, the electricians are, have been busy getting everything all hooked up, wired up. All the components there. Last Wednesday, October eighth, we, we, um, we turned on the pump to see if it would work. Rob wanted, Rob, um, Wind River Oilfield Services requested that. He wanted a pump test. We, we changed a couple of wires, we had the wires were backwards, we had to change a couple of wires on the pump in order to get it, but it eventually flowed. So it's working. Yesterday, we flushed the well. The, flushed out all the chlorine that was, that was put in there when they installed it. All the cooling damage. We flushed that up. We, um, flushed twenty-one thousand eight hundred sixty-five gallons of we flushed until we got a point zero six residual, then Rob, Rob and Jamie, they took their back tea samples. So it's been sampled, we took the samples into Landier Hospital, we tested. And I got a call at around about four o'clock from Rob. Their result were positive, went negative. They were, they were good. So that well is ready to come online. If the, if the electrician, um, got done today, there were, they just had a few minor hookups to do today. I think everything should be all hooked up except for the, the, uh, fire alarm. I think that's what they were working on. Okay, the fire alarm, I think I see, I can't remember. When we put, we turned that pump on, it, it started pumping at two hundred twenty-nine gallons per minute. And by the end of, when we were shutting down, it was, it was, um, two hundred and two gallons. That's without any pressure on the engine, just straight out of the. Dusty is still there programming the SCADA, huh, the SCADA system. And he should be about complete with that. I'm reading most of it on the screen in my office.
Do you like having that in your office?
Yeah, I, I'm reading most of it.
Yeah.
He's probably doing well better. Somebody is still up there. Still showing on the screen, there's a motion. So somebody's still in the pump house working, probably, probably Dusty. And once, once he's done program, we should be able to utilize well number four and then when we're oilfield services will move to well two and start the demo over there. The well, well number four and five, we should be able to keep up with, with the with the usage, what the town is using. Town is not using that much water yet. The town probably gets cold and then we'll stack policy increases again. Right now we're pushing forty-five thousand a day. He's, um, he's only pumping twice a day. Hopefully, uh, well four will push at least two hundred or maybe one eighty with the, um, with, with back pressure, huh, once we get the water, system. And so that should keep us, keep up with the town easy. The, the only concern I will have on that is my chlorine, since I'm switched yes. But that, that, uh, system up there is, uh, flow based, you know, you should just go with whatever gallon per minute. It's capable to run whatever gallons I'm pushing. It's just that amount of chlorine. I, I told Mike we'll watch that for the first few days when, when it try on, on that end and this end. So we check in residuals. The, um, because it goes towards the mushroom farm and then there's another line comes down, it's his transmission line that comes in. There's two lines.
Yes.
Under that wellhouse, so it'll split, it'll come down. Once the town is full, it'll go towards the tank. It'll be, it'll be tank. So hopefully by next week, maybe we're tomorrow, depending on you know, I'll walk there in the morning and check, see what's going on. How far we are, and if we can go ahead and utilize it. So they can get started on well two. Get that one done. Um, we're at the trailhead project. The concrete piers for the picnic structure have been poured. And that was all. They haven't poured the slab yet. But it's formed up, there are B bars in it.
Do they keep in that picnic table where they had it before?
No, they're building another one beside it, make it kind of like. This one sits here, this should be another one right here.
Right.
That's, that's the period they poured for that one. And that one that's there now, they removed the shingles. And the the, um, underlayment, where the roof is on there already, but no shingles yet. But that's, that's all the activity I've seen down there lately. Other than that, they're not, they haven't been there a couple of days now. I don't know, I haven't heard nothing from Ryan or Lisa.
Okay.
Down over here on the east side sidewalk project. They, they poured the valley gutters for on Oregon Street, King Street. Those are poured for the radius of that. And they've been forming up the sidewalk for between those two streets in front of Tom's Garage. That area there.
Mm-hmm.
They're, they're forming up there, you know. I don't know when they're gonna pour. I haven't talked to I haven't talked to them. We've been busy winterizing things, thousands and vehicles. Maybe getting everything all winterized. Well, all I got, any questions?
I have two, um, on the gallons per minute out of four, uh, dropping twenty gallons per minute. Uh, five did the same thing.
Usually it loses head. The head will drop, when the head, when the head drops, it loses some of the gallons per minute to push out, when it pushes out. In that part of influence, the water drops.
The table.
Yeah, the state, static level is usually at, uh, this one is, four is at three. Should three forty-five, I think? And five is at three twenty, or three forty-five. Yeah, three forty, three forty-three. And so when you, when we're pumping it, it dropped, cleared out to one seventy-seven. And it lost its, it lost its, kind of like it lost the pressure that was on top of the head. It drops, it doesn't push as much, it don't push as much water.
Just pulling from the bottom then?
Yeah, and then, um, that is a small pump. It's only rated for, I think, one fifty. It's just twenty-five horse. That, that's original, original motor pump that was in there before I got here. So I don't know why that's smaller than the other three. Because the other three is one to sixteen, the other two are fifties.
Well, that was my next question is why, why it's pulling so, so much drastically less than everything else of a?
Yeah, it, it's just a smaller motor.
Okay.
Smaller motor. I don't know how many stages was on that one. I think it was seven, seven stages on the pump.
And then all the uh, surface equipment was designed to match that pump. We looked at the option of trying to put a bigger pump in. But, uh, we're not, uh, drawing.
Yeah, when it, when it, drawing, drawing the water brings it down too low. That's probably why it's got a smaller horsepower pump, motor. That's, that's why I don't push that much. And then when it runs, we, we push it to the tank, it, when it got to it stabilized at ninety gallons, that, that's pushing against all that head, hundred PSI of head to that tank. So I think that's where it'll, it'll eventually stay as ninety. Because for that twenty-four hour run, we put on, just to see what it would do. But, I don't know, that's, that's about all I know that, that well. That's the first time I've run that one.
I just was trying to figure out of why, you know, why we were having that drop and, and
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if there was a
No, that's.
A, a, a starting gallons per minute and then a running gallons per minute, you know?
No, they, they usually start, you know, they'll start high, then they'll eventually drop, like we turn on two, it'll jump almost to three hundred gallons per minute. Followed by half an hour, it's down to two twenty-eight. It just slowly drops. Of all the head pressure pushing against and the, and the level of the head going down. That's it, that's what they usually do. They start high then drop.
Okay.
Stabilize out.
That's all I had. Thank you for the updates.
Anybody else got questions from Mike?
And I, I did the inventory of my parts for the main lines. I had enough for the six, six inch, and I have one set for the ten inch. So I, but I didn't have nothing for the eight inch, so I ordered eight inch parts and ten inch, one more set of ten inch sleeves and gaskets.
Yeah.
Mega legs, bolts. They haven't, they haven't gotten here yet, so. They, they are ordered.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, yep, back. Uh, quarter one financial report. You want to present that, Chris, or?
Yeah, I I will. So this one actually kind of grabs, so with better visual representation of this strictly numbers. So I put this was the quarterly report, but since the yearly report was the last couple of years ago, the other graphs kind of became the yearly, I touched on those after the quarterly. The first two, I'm going to relate, Q one, uh, revenue expenditures and Q one revenues and budget are the focus of this, um. So in the first quarter, the town had the highest revenue over budget since I've been here by far. And as well as the highest rated change in balance at the end of the quarter. All of the departments are pretty much on track as far as expenditure is below, undiscretionary. Um, the total combined of all departments accounted, um, at twenty-five percent. But there's some things that were ordered. There were one-time large purchases that were made in the first quarter that if you take those out, are actually below budget as far as expenditures goes on those departments. Uh, payroll's a little elevated, but that's because that first quarter, we had two employees in the court, now we have just the one. So that over the course of that two quarters, that will level out. Uh, but everything else is right on track as far as, uh, budget is concerned there. Um, there are no, if you look on the Q one revenues versus expenditures, you can see that over the preceding years from twenty-two to twenty-three, twenty-four, that our revenues have always been above our expenditure by, you know, varying degrees of, uh, numbers. But last year, you'll see a deflection point where the revenues actually were below the expenditures. And that will come in later when I go over the yearly stuff, but then you see this massive jump where our expenditures are now tailing off. Uh, revenues have obviously gone through the roof in the first quarter. Um, and that's showing total revenues, not just the, this subset of revenues that's displayed here, that's all of the town revenues. That are more, that aren't variable, they're pretty much are what they are. These ones are variable, is why these ones are more of a, uh, update in that format. Um, and then if you look at the, uh, the second one, uh, shows the government is over budget. And every year, we're always over budget first quarter, but you just look at the gap. So two years ago, three years ago, actually, um, when we had that huge surplus of money, then last year it dipped. And now we're back to, you know, above within those two years ago, we had, so, so, um, all in all, the first quarter was, I, I don't think you can get any better than that, uh, positive balance, or ninety-two thousand dollars in one quarter, I think is pretty. We're pretty good.
Hope that trend continues all year.
Yeah, I know.
Wasn't part of that, uh, chief coming from what we were, we got some collections from money that was Otis on our recovery for?
Yeah, some of it's overflow from the fourth quarter of last year and then other stuff coming back that we, that came into this quarter is part of that. Uh, part of its collections that we've received on the court side, the police department, you know? Uh, if you look back here, the police department, or not, I'm sorry, the court, um, was up forty thousand dollars off the budget. In one quarter.
But we weren't, we were a little behind on the last quarter because we hadn't received some grants money.
And so some of that.
Yeah, that sort of makes up for that.
Correct, yeah. And that's why we're not obviously, I kind of modified the budget upwards forty thousand dollars, because that's, you know, carryover from the previous year, and some of that is. But, um, the majority of it is, was overall exceeding expectations on many of our lending clauses. That's pretty much.
Has everybody else got that sheet?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just tried.
I'm looking at it on the left.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on your.
Oh, it's on the left.
Yeah, I took off the, uh, the graph, so you, but that sheet.
That sheet's on the, uh, iPad. Okay, yeah, got it.
Um, and then switching over, you know, from the yearly report, um, in graph form, um, you can see the court court revenues as they've trending upward over the years. Um, this looks at every quarter going back to twenty-twenty-one, first quarter twenty-twenty-one. And you can see the trend line of collections, um, throughout the years. And quarter one was a hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven ninety-two, which
I've got a speed trap.
Is, yeah, you know. Quite part of that, you know, is due to, um, multiple quarters, you know, things coming in, the collections of things, but you know, it's twenty-five thousand, twenty-four thousand over, next highest over we've ever had, so that's trending in the right direction. Uh, and then you can go look at our, our trends of income levels. Um, which breaks down different types of income. Um, according to buying down to mineral, uh, mineral, oil, severance tax, direct distribution. Most of those on a plot line on this map that goes up. Most of those on a plot line on this map that goes up to one point four million, a few are flat, but if you look at the top one of our core revenue. That's the one I think is most important. And you can see the trend line where we had it dip the last two years and now we're, we're exceeded seeing where we are today. Um, the enterprise funds, um, this one is looking at the blue line is the revenue. And the orange line is expenditure. Back in twenty twenty one, we had some big expenses that came out that year. And then it returned to normal operations and they were trending upwards as revenue trend upwards. And what happened is our revenue in the last two years decreased significantly despite raising water rates. And what happened is that we had an influx or a reversal of expenditures over revenue from both the water and the wastewater funds in the same inflection point. Um, and that you can see is where our balances last year took a nosedive. Uh, and some of that is we've lost some big customers that were uh the mushroom farm, for example, is a thirty thousand dollar a year hit by having them. Um, the motel is another twelve thousand dollar hit. So every dollar we raise, the water rates is only four thousand dollars more. So you can do the math, what it's gonna take to recoup that. And controlling expenditures is something that we're trying to do and that we've leveled them off. But a lot of it had to do with the buildup of replacing pumps, I think we replaced two pumps in the last year. And those are thirteen, fifteen thousand dollars a pop. You know, so that's hopefully that was you can see the trend line is starting to come back and converge back on the positive. But, you know, we're not, we're not there yet, but we'll see how quarter two, quarter three go, but now we at least have a representation of in, you know, per quarter, we can look at that and see that trend. But it looks like it's returning back to positive territory if we continue this current trend that we're going. But um I just think it's kind of cool having the ma- the graphs you've actually seen, so if you just tell me numbers, you can actually kind of see the trends and see where things happen. Um, all fans, all funds, revenue expenditures. Um again, you can see that inflection point where the expenditures went up and, and our revenue was outstripped by expenditures, but now that has returned back to revenue is outpacing expenditures again on all funds. Including water and, and sewer and capital projects, so that's on this huge gap the last two years on the gold line versus the silver line. That's where we had a large amount of subsidy essentially going to projects from the general fund into the water department and the sewer department. Enterprise funds um to offset uh the cash match, so they should never be aligned because we always have to pay some cash match for these, but those two years we had to pay that out of the general fund because there was not enough money in the water and wastewater because it was running a deficit. So does that make, hope that makes sense on, on the yearly trends that would return back to stability in that for that. Um, and then the last one just uh shows budget trends with individual departments and how those um have changed over the years. Then you can see this last year, they all, they all were decreased with the exception of four. Which was pretty much so, any questions? Oh, and who's also uh in the midst of all this, we've also been able to uh, we have not had to use the uh the, the credit for matching funds and uh on top of that, we've also added a hundred fifty thousand dollars to the wild star simultaneously because of this order being as good as a
So we have, we can spend more.
No. Well, yes, but no.
No, I know, I've
That'd be even better if you were back out getting more pump inserts.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, eventually I'll be able to, you know, contribute.
Then you could fill the splash pad for the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's crazy, there's Shoshone Police got one pulled there and Highway Patrol got one pulled over right over there simultaneously.
Like they're poaching.
Hey, I want in on that speed trap business, I figured.
Riding, riding coattails. But I do believe we still have like eighty two thousand dollars in outstanding, their outstanding collections balance going back years. That's slowly hopefully going to be decreasing, which will further add additional revenue that is on aging, but not realized yet. For the first quarter, I don't think you get any better than that.
Guess I'm in charge.
I, I mean, I can keep talking until he gets back.
Well, I know my wife has recovered a significant amount of them collections already.
So, I, I mean the big takeaway is that every first quarter, I guess, if you look back at that, has always been a positive quarter, we have not had a negative quarter one since I've been here. But this one, bu- by and large is
The biggest.
Is by far the biggest and, you know, last year we had a decrease in how the, the difference started shrinking between budget and revenues that were realized. But then this quarter for this year has reversed that by far to the highest it's ever been. Um, which sets itself, we're at thirty percent of our budget revenues. We're already at thirty percent of the year in one quarter. Which, you know, five percent is fifty thousand dollars, it's a million dollar budget. So that's, that's pretty significant for one.
It's nice to put a little bit back in savings.
Which is what we were able to do, you know, a hundred fifty thousand and not having to use that line of credit to pay for, you know, the change, not change orders, but pay applications we're getting until we get a reimbursement, we have enough cash flow, positive cash flow that we're ready to
Cover it.
Cover it and be able to stock away money back in savings.
As modern technology, it's a lot more difficult to float checks than it used to be.
Yeah. And so, yeah, they, they frown upon that. And so, um, the guidance for uh quarter two is gonna be um last, the last two years, quarter two has actually been a deficit, so is quarter three. Um, we believe this second quarter is gonna be uh slightly above positive again, so the way it's tracking so far in October, it's shaping up to be another positive quarter, not this to this extent. But historically, we've been in the negative second quarter to some extent, this one is tracking to be a positive, so I mean, we're, we're, we're in good shape. You know, a lot better than we were last year. Despite the projects and everything else, we're trending in the right direction and doing well. Right, any questions?
Not for me. You and the clerk are doing a good job of tracking this, of course.
Yeah, that's, it's team effort, I mean, you know, we got the grants on one side, we got outstanding coming in and, and on multiple different fronts and trying to stay on top of that, it's
I remember what it looked like back in early twenty. It was a total Charlie Fox try, yeah, I can understand none of it, so I appreciate the way that the clerk and you lay it out, so it's completely understandable.
Yeah, she likes graphs, so that's why we have graphs now.
If there's no other questions, we'll move on down to the thirteen resolution, twenty five dash zero zero five fiscal year twenty six revenue and expenditures.
And so this touch base is real quick, um, you know, I said that we're not gonna raise our revenues based on one good quarter, this is a specific one that we know what it is, it's, it's set, we just under budgeted for it. And it's only a minor amount, but it also includes um the, some things with the police department that came up with when I was out for extended period of time and the cost that we incurred, as well as some things that we scaled back when we did the budget cuts that uh came up that we actually need to add to the budget. Uh, one is uh, I mean, two new sets of tires for winter, they're just bald and we didn't, we were hoping to get through this year and I don't think safety wise, it's probably a smart idea, it's probably actually a bad winter since we had two mild winters. Um, the firearms, well, I get to, but it's just some other equipment that we, we're hoping to wait, but we actually need now, um. And the, the net difference after this, uh if everything is approved would be that leaves eight thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars of remaining unallocated funds in our budget. Uh, so, uh, resolution number twenty five dash zero zero five, a resolution authorizing the increasing of the FY twenty twenty six budget revenues and expenditures for the town of Shoshone. Whereas the governing body for the town of Shoshone passed a budget resolution for FY twenty twenty six, including expected revenues and expenditures. And whereas the governing body of the town of Shoshone recognizes revenues from both unexpected sources and revenues in excess of budget revenues occur due to additional funding made available during the budget year. And whereas the governing body for the town of Shoshone recognized that the town of Shoshone estimated revenue of direct distribution supplemental funding was one hundred and ten thousand. And actual, actual revenue is one hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and thirty seven. And whereas the governing body for the town of Shoshone recognizes new employees hired during the budget process having different employee costs than outlined in the FY twenty six appropriations. And whereas the governing body for the town of Shoshone recognizes that substantial budget reductions in departments were instituted to ensure return to positive cash flow following deficits in the previous two fiscal years due to capital projects. And whereas the governing body for the town of Shoshone recognizes fiscal year twenty six quarter one revenues far exceeded expectations and expenditures with reductions have been that have been at a budget resulting in a hundred and ninety two thousand, five hundred and eighty dollar surplus. Whereas the governing body for the town of Shoshone recognizes that the current FY twenty twenty six budget has twenty three thousand, five hundred and ninety and unallocated funds. Now therefore being resolved by the governing body of the town of Shoshone authorized the town treasurer to increase the budget revenue of the following line items and the amount specified commensurate with revenues received in excess of budget. Ten thirty three, one seventy, direct distribution supplemental funding, six thousand, three hundred and thirty seven dollars. Now therefore be it further resolved by the governing body of the town of Shoshone authorized the town treasurer to increase expenditures of the following line items and the amount specified. Ten fifty four, one thirty five, insurance, nine thousand, one hundred and ninety seven. Ten fifty four, four fifty, firearms ammunition, six thousand, three hundred. Ten fifty four, two eighty, telephone, eight hundred. Ten fifty four, two fifty, vehicle repairs, sixteen hundred. Ten fifty four, one sixteen, part time, twenty five hundred. Ten fifty four, one twenty, on call, one thousand, two hundred. I guess now I can talk specifically about what those are.
Anybody have any questions on our, any of those numbers? Have a motion to approve.
Alright, the motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Move, move by Councilman Harkey, second. My, my by Councilman Stabler, now is there any discussion, any, any further discussion? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye, close the same, motion passed, all in the affirmative. Building permit, Brian Cooper, one oh two east third street garage and deck. What?
So I mean, it's behind it.
Well, that's what I was looking at. It says this is one or two east third streets, that must, it says on the south end, that must be a garage.
No, that's a front.
If you read it, it says permit for the demolition of a twenty by thirty garage attached to the southern end of the building.
That would be the southern.
This is the southern end.
Yeah.
That's probably about twenty by thirty, but it, I don't know, we're on your doors. One thing can chop, I guess, I don't know. Twenty by thirty.
I'm confused because the south end's a front door.
Yeah.
That's where I'm confused.
Yeah. I'm not quite sure where this is at.
It's right across the street, it's that gray building that's right across from the library on the corner. There's that uh fish bait vending machine that's on the sidewalk right there, it's that building. Two, it's a two story building.
Yeah, I know, where, where are we gonna tear out and put a deck?
That's well, this is a southern end, is he talking about the eastern end maybe? Like he's got his directions. Flip, I don't know.
Unless he's gonna tear out, yeah, he, he has to southern is
The front door.
This is that whole gray section they're talking about. I'm gonna need in.
It's Brian.
North end, he's standing at the door.
Yeah.
Oh. North end.
We'll get in here, Brian, so we can hear you.
Please speak, speak up, identify, speak up, identify yourself, please.
Oh. Sorry, I was watching.
That's good.
Over there. No, I apologize, it, it's supposed to be off the northern end of the building.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, we were confused.
I was obviously confused when I wrote it then.
So, and so you're gonna build a, a ten by fifteen deck and, and it's
Roughly, we haven't, the exact dimensions have not been figured out because we wanted to see what we have once we got to the garage down.
I'm glad to see what you're doing.
Move, we approve the building permit with the amendment where it says the garage attached to the northern end, as that was a typo.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
So here, he's talking about
Yeah.
That part, the northern. So it's gonna be, you're gonna be taking out the, tearing down the, the garage part, the, the garage with, it was sort of a yeah, because that was sort of a porch. When it was originally built.
I don't know, I
Yeah, it was sort of a porch.
When it was built on originally. Everything else is built pretty well in that building, but that condition was not.
Yeah, that was sort of a, that was a porch, Jack Ward built it. That looked very nice when that's done, too. I'm glad you were listening to clarify.
Yeah, me too, I, I just happened to, it's like, well, listen to him while I'm watching it too. Heard my name and I was like, alright, but alright, I appreciate you guys.
So I have one question for you, that is gonna be built out of two by six, two by four, your deck, just so I know.
Um, well
Or composite deck or what's your?
I haven't even got to the pricing on that yet, I, like you said, I want to see your map, but um, a lot depends on the price and how I wanna, you know, do it, but I'd like to do a composite, but with two by six, obviously, um, at least we'll see what happens.
Okay.
It'll be, it'll be done right either way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, I did a, recently did a debt two years ago on one of my rentals and I used that composite stuff and I was just trying to think how much money I spent. Ten by fifteen. Ten by fifteen, mine was probably a little bit bigger, but not, not a lot.
I built the four by eight with two steps and it cost me about fourteen hundred bucks.
You did it yourself.
Yeah, I hired mine done. It was just
I get what he was saying, it's like I wanna tear it down, get it demoed, and then say what's gonna look good here, I totally get that.
I get it. Those three, what I'm getting at is three to five thousand dollar cost estimates probably in the ballpark.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I, that's, I'm caught up, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was just, yeah, I give.
Yeah, no, I think that's more than fair.
Yeah.
Probably what, they're like me, that's probably what they gotta budget it, so that's what it's going to cost.
Yeah, that's sure. So I have a motion to approve.
It's already been motioned.
Oh, okay, within discussion, okay. So.
And, and in my motion, I said with the correction of northern end.
Yes, so noted.
As it was a typo.
As noted. There's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, same, motion passed only. Let's move on to town quarter duties, responsibility, job description. I believe you already got it, called the proposed job description.
Starts on page twenty nine, right?
Uh.
I can flip it off.
I, I have it on my iPad here.
It's thirty.
Page thirty.
Thirty, thirty one, and then uh attorney's input on page thirty two. So one, I was, nobody's saying nothing, so I will. One thing that some of the wording I thought was uh not real good. And I felt rather than saying responsible for the day to day management of a town's operations, under the policy of the mayor. And I thought it'd be a lot better word if it was something like uh to ensure that the policies and directions of the mayors are carried out in the day to day operation. Says the same thing, but it means a whole lot of difference, but here's the part that gets me, supervises town employees, oversees the implementation policies and ordinances. Well, if we were leaning towards having Chris fill in that role, which he would be bang up for it. I believe that would make him as mother supervisor against town policy and nepotism. And cannot be done. Unless we're changing town policy to allow family members to be supervisors of family members. It's also against state statute. So that was my concern with it.
I guess the exception to that would be explicitly that defining that. Except for that, that for a certain department would import to a different person, is how they handle it and I guess like, uh, the sheriff's office, you know, lieutenant whose brother was, that'd be
Yeah, my concern with that too is the, the whole issue that brought all this up was disruption in that department. And problems in that department that would take the town coordinator out of the department, we're talking about having this for.
Right.
So therefore it's, it's a move, it's pointless.
It's with a ministry of our, our size. We don't have street departments. And definitely, the mayor is is a direct supervisor, he ma- he manages the day to day operation, he was elected to that position to perform those duties by the public.
But he wasn't elected to act like he did that day.
Uh, I, I, I take, I really take uh issue with that. Because mayor did not act out of position that day. But anyway, but let's go on about, about this.
Well, that's why this is in place, because there was there was things that took place that could have been prevented.
Should, should we get into executive session if we're gonna discuss?
We've already been in the executive session enough over this.
I'm asking the attorney.
If, if we're gonna get into specifics about that, and I
I'm not getting into specifics.
Right, and you have on the agenda none, so what I would suggest is staying away from what had previously happened, stay on the agenda regarding policy.
Item fifteen.
Yes, policy. That's
All I'm saying is, all I'm saying is, that situation is what got us to this point.
I don't know, I'm not arguing that, but I am saying that the way this is lined out, a person that I would think would be most suited for a position such as this couldn't legally take that position. In my opinion. But it's been well established, I cannot make legal opinion. But it's nepotism.
Yeah, that, that would be a real concern.
But that was my concern when I read this.
Uh supervision position. I, I believe right now that, that office is, the town business is running smoothly. Again, that's And it's ran smoothly for years.
But that's not on topic fifteen right now, that's, we're talking about the town coordinator.
I'm just saying, I don't believe we need her. We, I don't believe we need a town coordinator.
The other question I had is the way it was written. Who would do the hiring and firing of the town coordinator? That's being not spelled out, I would assume would fall under the mayor's jurisdiction like all employees do.
Well, if, we, when the mayor had sent me the charter ordinance, which actually outlines exactly how the department could do their hiring, this was What would that? So your coordinator would be the same as the uh, as, it has to be a department.
Because it says position type additional duty.
Yeah, it's an additional duty or department.
So the council couldn't be doing the hiring?
No.
No.
So I, I appreciate everybody's embrace, everybody wants the best for Shoshone, but I, I think we're moving forward.
No, I think we should table it, so we can do some research on this.
I agree. I make a motion to table fifteen A, town coordinator duties and responsibilities job description.
I'll second it.
And we've moved and seconded further discussion. I would like to further state, I think we're wasting time on, on this. That's my, that's my person, personal opinion, but
I, I don't feel that way, whether we go with it or we don't go with it. I think the, any time invested in our employees uh for the smoothness of our daily operation is time well invested. Um, as far as the concerns Jake's brought up, I think those are all valid points and I I think we need to look into it and, and uh not get down a rabbit hole here, but I think um I mean, my, my interpretation, the only department head who could by current policies and laws, take that position is Mike Quiver, and I don't think he wants it. More work. And, and, uh, that's my, the way my understanding of it, and I could be very wrong. And I think that's why we probably should further investigate.
May further discussion? None being all in favor say aye to table it.
Aye.
Aye.
All's the same, aye. Note that the mayor will opposition to this. Motion passed. Moving on to new busy, plating a seventy two acres west side addition. Uh, Chris and I sat in a conversation with CEPI, that we did the initial surveying of the lots, they did give us a sort of a rough estimate that would be probably thirty five to forty five lots. And I want uh Chris sort of take over on that, explain.
Sure, um, I do all the talking, you share the wealth, right?
So uh uh, we had previous council, we had uh some basic uh conversations on plating that acres, we were trying to go between one to five and just kind of back and forth, what the best it would be. Um, and then some of it was the topographical aspects of it, and so we tried to do a rudimentary drawing of kind of what it would look like, and I think we came up with at the time, I think twenty eight lots when we just Joe and I just did our own thing. Um, and obviously they came up with um additional lots, they're gonna kind of reconfigure it because some of the lots were right there on the hill, it wouldn't be if you bought that lot, you, you couldn't do anything with it, so they're gonna expand those out a little bit, so it's gonna reduce some of the available. Um, but it is a good plan, it kind of sticks congruent with the current um street layout that we do have for the most part. And they're gonna try and make those lots more uh, make sense based on the topographical nature of things. Um, we're gonna get some of the sewer stuff, and so right now is what they're proposing is to do is to plat those, and the council, of course, would be able to see it, you know, and agree and discuss it before it's finalized, but um, plat it, um, and then put the pins in and then get it submitted to the county for that, and that's the first phase, they're not, this doesn't include anything else as far as planning for sewer, water, gas, any of the, any of that, that would be a, a separate thing. And so I don't know if you saw the email, they're predicting about ten thousand is what they figured it would cost to do that, which is uh, we paid seventeen thousand for the forty acres, which involved more work, but um, so it's, it's within that ballpark and we have the ability to take care of that, but I think it's something that we need to get this figured out so we can start moving forward.
Did we, on the forty? Did we get pins pounded or?
Yes, it just has not, as far as I'm aware, I don't think Apex has got with the county to get it on the map survey yet.
That's okay.
But it is pinned.
Okay.
Is it a hundred percent pinned, did Gary?
I thought it was, but maybe
See, I thought it was his summer, but it wasn't, and my conversation with him, he didn't have it all the pins in.
Okay.
Before he could file it. We thought, we seen him working, so that's out there, and, and
I assume that's my fault.
Yeah, yeah, I, no, I assumed too it was done, but I gotta hold him, it wasn't. So I reached out to him, they he came back to me to see if it's done, so, so we can buy, so it isn't officially done till he gets all the pins in his file. And with the advice of Lisa Burridge, the, who consulted with, she said we need to the Realtor out of Casper.
I was gonna go right there and ask if there's any kind of update on that.
Yeah, we need to get this stuff that platted, and then sort of, then we can, then we can move, then we can move forward to start selling.
She indicates she might be on board for selling or what?
Yes.
Representing us?
Yes.
Let's follow her advice.
Yeah, she uh, she wants that, we get a few more things together, and we'll, once we get ready to move on something more, we'll work out a contract.
Because if nothing else, you know Olivia, she's been selling over here just left and right, there was a house up for two weeks and it's already sold.
I have to scale out of Casper knows how, all the legalities and municipality.
Is she gonna care, come here though?
That's what I'm trying to
I thought before she said she wouldn't come.
Well, she, me, physically, physically she'll make it up here when we get, she is shorthanded and just busier than a
But is she gonna come here to?
Cowboy in a bucket contest.
Is she gonna come here to help sell it? Or is she gonna try to just do that over?
My, my suggestion is to get someone that has experience dealing with
Municipality.
Ground municipalities and getting rid of municipal ground, I know Olivia, and I'm just telling you, I, my experience with her is already built residential homes, people are turning, so
You know her real well.
Olivia, I've dealt with her.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've dealt with her, and I have nothing bad to say about her, I'm just saying my experience with her and been selling homes that are already built.
Right.
That's someone's own versus what you guys are trying to do, which is a separate has its whole new other animals that go with it. Lisa, I believe is one of the top in the state in doing this, uh, she sold over a thousand lots in Casper area.
That's what we need, is somebody who knows how to sell municipality owned property.
And, and help us market it.
Well, one that comes to my mind is uh Spencer Piplika, and he has brought or sold to several businesses that have established themselves in Riverton. Whether they've bought ground and built, or whether they've bought a terrible existing structure and turned it into their business front.
Was he selling privately owned ground or public owned?
Like he sold both.
I guess my, my point is, when we talk, or when everybody talked before, everybody was under the impression they wanted someone to come in that would also have the connections for the developers, that would put everything, including utilities, roads, and put that in part of the sale. Not someone, which is um, everybody, to me, it sounds like I'm thinking on this on the legal one, okay, for zoning and everything else, you want nice homes. If you get someone that's just gonna sell lots, I'm gonna tell you, from my experience of watching what happened down in Thermopolis where they're just selling lots. You're probably gonna not get what you want. If, that was where I was going to next, she has a contractor uh, in mind and does work for her down in Casper, that does real well, that would be interested in coming to Shoshone and doing some and doing something. It's uh
And she's the one who said, get the plating done.
Get the, she said, get the plating done, and how I ended up getting to her, the recommendation of rural development. They said they've worked with her a lot on similar projects, and the head of rural development for state of Wyoming said this is who you need to contact.
I'm not opposed to anything, I just
That was, that's how I
I just wanna see, I don't go. I just wanna see this get some traction.
Yeah.
Instead of us meeting every two months, and it's the same song and dance, like, let's shit or get off the pot. That's where I'm at with this, I mean, we, we, let's get some traction and go, I'm not saying let's
By, by, you Right, right, so legally, regardless what you want.
I'm not first thing you
Following your legalities.
I'm just saying, well, let's get some traction.
That, that, this is what I'm trying to tell you, the first thing legally, no matter what you gotta do, is you have to have a plat.
Right.
And that's what was just brought up.
So let's get rolling on the plating piece.
That, that's what, exactly what we brought
But that's what we talked about two months ago. We talked about it needed platted two months ago, and we've done nothing to advance that.
I move with CEPI, go ahead and plat the seventy two acres.
I'll second it.
Third it.
It's been moved by Councilman Steller, second by Councilman Hart, to, that we uh, our CEPI to do our plating. Any further discussion?
I do, so, since this is a professional service under the thirty five thousand dollars or whatever, we don't need to
Correct.
Yes, we don't need the bids.
No, no.
Since, okay, that was my
And they did the original surveying for us, so they have all that data already, is probably how come the prices are reasonable.
Right, yeah, we need to stick with them because they've got all the ground.
Yes, they've already done that there.
Pun intended.
Yes. Yeah.
Fair enough.
And no more, no more discussion, none being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all's the same, motion passed, all affirmative.
Yeah, I guess my point was there's no point talking about real different Realtor at this point, you got.
First, I just wanted to just get traction, let's roll, and we talked about this.
Anyway, uh, seventy one. The change order for seventy one construction.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, use the picture if you haven't seen it already, but I think everyone's had a chance to see what we came up with. So originally, this comes off of the building um, as the drainage and that uh, the pathway um, drains over there, so the asshole's gonna cover that and they were gonna build a, just pretty much take it to the street and just put a slope or a.
It it's a valley and it is what he said.
But then, once they started to prepare the groundwork for that, they found that we have a nice French drain already there that's in place and has, I'm not sure if it's an overflow or what it serves the purpose, but there has been fresh water in there. Um, and so in order to be able to complete this, we would have to encase it in a concrete box and then put a grate on top of it. And then build that up and then pave up to it. And so they did a change order for that. Um, also, um, the minimum is four yards. I think we have probably not two yards that we could use around town and other stuff, so although we're going to this project, we can still use that concrete for other things in town that we need to get done anyway, so um, that's the cost of it. Unfortunately, there's not really many other options to do with this at this point.
Well, there there's always one more option, be just abandon it.
Just abandon it.
But we got a, we got, there was probably a design in the in the building to have that French drain there for a purpose.
Yeah.
Didn't know it was there, but.
Well, it's that, it's, you know, for the roof runoff runoff comes down through that drain and and then even under that metal plate that's there, it's only concrete about fifty percent, probably forty five percent, and then it's just dirt and rock to that box that has been covered for some time anyway.
And there's a drain that goes into that, that's actually in the French drain that feeds into it. We don't know where it originates from, but it it's.
I speculate it's an overflow.
Yeah, so.
Cause it goes towards the sewer.
Move we approve the change order for seventy one construction.
I'll second it.
It been moved by Councilman Steller, second by Councilman Hart, we approved the the change or seventy one construction for the amount of forty three hundred and thirty two dollars.
Forty four hundred.
Forty four. And thirty two. Been moving secondly for the discussion. None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same, motion packed, all affirmative. Would you like to bring some, would you like to discuss something? Bring up the town.
Yeah, I I uh, one thing I have is prior to me on council, I know you guys spent some money on our Shoshone signs as we enter. Yes. And those are starting to get run down and decrepit fast. Um, the clear coat are not clear coat, but the polyurethane that was put on those signs um, is peeling. And uh, we we need to look at doing something with those.
Yes, yes, we do.
Uh, especially this one as you enter from Riverton and Thermopolis uh, or the not Thermopolis, but Casper, the the one from Thermopolis is probably in the best shape of the three. Um, but the one out by Dimick's Place and out by Dimick's Place, air um, and really rough shape and faded and peeling and uh, I know that that was a big push for a long time to get those and they're I don't know if the polyurethane is the best method to go um, or if epoxy would be granted, I'm not a woodworker for my trade, but I think we need to look at doing something.
Yeah, I agree. I believe Bart was gonna look into something, but he got, yeah, I mean, I don't, they, we definitely need to do something with those, they're relatively expensive.
That's what I have.
Mike, could you take note of that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thought you did. Any, anything else? That's all I got for this one. Uh, Councilman Hartkey.
On our swing sets, I thought we got swing sets. Haven't seen him put up anywhere.
Uh, last I, that would be Mike, you know what's going on with the swing sets down in the the old third park?
Part I had a go to.
Okay. Then they've been too busy doing other.
And they're gonna put them at the park behind the senior citizens?
Yes.
Kim said that they I think it was her and Bart kind of picked out a nice spot uh, towards the west, I think.
I just don't want Jake's kids to grow up too big for really get to use them.
They're never too big for swings, I'll be on, I'll be pushing kids off of them just.
Yeah, the, yeah, they they've been uh, Public Works has been really busy dealing with the wells and sidewalks, every everything else that they're looking at and doing.
They're doing a good job.
And staying busy, no spare time. Jake. Don't you want to tell us about your Buffalo out?
I ain't, I ain't got a Buffalo yet, so it continues.
It's touch bases on a couple of things we had. I had a land meeting we went to in Pinedale that was that was very very informative, pretty good, pretty good, pretty good meeting. Uh, they kicked around a a bunch of, bunch of topics. Uh, one of the things I thought I brought some paperwork in here for that, but I didn't. Uh, they they have the, the WAM has joined the Na- Na- National League of cities and towns, villages. And they're having their national convention in Salt Lake City. And WAM would pay for the coverage if anybody off our council wanted to go, mightn't pay for two. It would be up for the the town to cover motel and travel. If we have, it's in November. Maybe November, I didn't bring that in. I'll send the information out, but if anybody was interested in going, I I think there's already twenty some people from twenty six, have already signed up from municipalities, from Wyoming municipalities are going down. There was, we had a representative, four or five went last year to was it Washington D C or something back there, went there, I don't know, Mayor Pinedale, they bring home a twenty thousand dollar grant. And it's it's uh, deals a lot on chasing federal grants and stuff like that. That's uh, I don't know, they said pretty, pretty, pretty interesting. Uh, I attended a when I, on my way home from Pinedale, I had a a meeting, Window Outdoor Recreation Collaborative. And uh, went to that meeting, it was pretty good. There's almost everybody there is bicyclist or hikers. Uh, I'm there representing shooting sports, uh, motorized, traffic, uh, and horses if you want to, cause they're not a lot of horse, but anyway, they they talk about them, but it's there's a lot of trails, but one interesting thing came out, the the, they haven't allocated the funding yet, but the legislature appropriated six million dollars by Anium for outdoor recreation, three million a year. That will start being probably available next year. So that that may have some interest, or maybe something that could that would be good for us, but I, but that was pretty good, but anyway, it's uh, it's Fremont County, it's a Fremont County thing. That would, that would be really good. Uh, you know, oth- other than, you know, the nothing's changed with any, oh, we do have some well, I'll see how that bounds out. I don't wanna hit the cart for the horse, but things are moving, I think are still moving fairly well with the with the regional cardio polymery center that they're looking at. I had very good, at the WAM convention, had very good conversations with representatives from Cody and Worland. Very supporting of of that facility that would support approximately ten percent of the state's population. Yeah. There was, I went went down there last week and lo and behold, there was someone from Shoshone in there reading the Shoshone book. Uh, sitting down there at uh, at the, at the facility, but and anyway, I don't have anything else. Do you have something you'd like to add, Chief?
No, probably the next meeting, I just get along and say something and have it not be ready, so I'll just wait till the next meeting.
Okay, Mike, anything you'd like to? We all good? If we are, okay.
I'll make a motion for us to go home.
That's what I was asking for. If we were done, I just want to give everybody a chance to talk. Been moved by Councilman Hartkey to adjourn this meeting of the Shoshone City Council, second, second by Councilman Steller. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, say aye.